Okay, we are back, 8:33 PM. Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notices public hearing to be held April 18th, 2019. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, April 18th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA 2019-04, File Number 1005E, Zoning Regulation Text Amendments, Alcohol Service Eligibility. Planning and Zoning Commission Propose zoning regulations text amendments to existing zoning Sections 2.1.1, 6.7, 1.9.12, and 10.1 regarding regulations pertaining to alcohol sales and service eligibility. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. All right, Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit 1, draft zoning text amendments as proposed by the commission. Exhibit 2, regional planning referral notices. Exhibit 3, adjacent municipality referral notices. Exhibit 4, Connecticut General Statute, Section 8.3I, referral notices to Aquarium Water and the State Public Health Department. Exhibit 5, West Cog response to referral. Exhibit 6, OLR research from the state of Connecticut regarding liquor establishments and minimum distance requirements. Exhibit 7, regulation of alcohol sales location comparison chart prepared by the Planning and Zoning Department. Exhibit 8, correspondence regarding elimination of separated distances between package stores by Paul Sobel. Exhibit 9, public comment letter by Larry Cass. Exhibit 10, Nogtuck Valley Regional Planning Response to Referral. Exhibit 11, Metro Cog Response to Referral. Exhibit 12, letter from Larry Cass with attachments. And Exhibit 13, letter from Roy Nealon with no date but received today. Those are all. This public hearing is for a text amendment, as was read in the public hearing notice, which is proposed by the commission. It's looking at the alcohol regulations in total, and it does a few different things. So we'll go through the proposal first. One of the first things that the amendment is proposing is to add a definition for a grocery store, which could have a component of beer and potentially wine sales. And we don't have a definition for grocery store. It would presently fall into just the plain retail, which is kind of open-ended. So we're adding a definition of the grocery store to show that a grocery store is primarily The next amendment has to do with the current requirement between liquor stores, package stores. There presently is a 1,500-foot separation distance in the regulation. This standard has been in place since around about 1965 in the town of Monroe. The amendment would eliminate that in its entirety, so there would no longer be a separation requirement. And again, the separation is only between like liquor stores. The other part of the amendment is referencing, has to do with alcohol service in facilities such as restaurants. Under the current requirements, you have to have a minimum of 50 seats in order to be eligible for alcohol service. The commission has looked at this, and your proposal is to eliminate the 50-seat requirement. So that opens it up a little bit, but still it requires specific table service. And if you recall, a year or so ago, or a little less, we revamped the regulations and were very specific about defining land uses, the different kinds of uses, and we added a bunch of different things to do with food service. And so this ties in well with that, that you're identifying the specific types of food services that this would now be eligible for. And that would be on-premise catering and a full-service restaurant. In keeping with that, I'm going to jump off this for a second, is in doing that, the only part in here that's in the blue that's really new is the first one, cafe, and the last one, tavern. All the other ones are already prohibited uses. As you can see, they're being crossed out. We're just changing the way they're represented in the code. The cafe and the tavern are a different type of liquor license for onsite consumption. And the commission, we don't have any of either one of these in town. And they're more your traditional, just straight-out bar. So that was not being included. So there's part of that change as well. This language ties in with the definition of the grocery store and how they have it. It's a different, it's really for beer licenses. And then the other amendments are really just as a result of the renumbering and rephrase And that's just recognizing what's coming out on the tables, because they're going to go into this section. So the commission had looked at this and sent this to the committee, and the committee made its recommendation. In the end, this is the regulation amendment that the commission as a whole had endorsed and has put to this public hearing. And just summarize that analysis or evaluation that the commission undertook when they were looking at this. The state of Connecticut does not have any regulations that regulate the distance between liquor stores. They leave the decision up to towns to whether you can have alcohol service or not have alcohol service, or if you want separation distance. The state doesn't do that. They do limit how many liquor stores you can have in a community based on population. It's one per 2,500. At the current town population, that gives us a total of seven potential licenses. And historically, we've had seven stores. There are a couple today that are in flux, but we've maintained basically the seven stores that we are permitted. If we should reach a population of 20,000, we would add another potential for another liquor store. With regards to other towns, the commission and the committee had asked the department to take a look at what other towns are doing. One of the things in the file is a chart that we put together, and we did review with the commission prior to them finishing the draft amendment. And what we found is that separation distance of any kind, there are several towns that do have one, and there are some that have, not necessarily from other liquor stores, they have it from things like churches and schools and the things you would more likely think that they'd have a separation from, which the town of Monroe does not have that. We only have a consideration of whether we're in proximity to churches, schools, public parks, and places frequented by minors. So you'll see in the chart, we did identify a few places where there are some of these things, and a fair amount of them are really just other uses like schools and churches. They are not from other liquor stores. There are a few from other liquor stores, and some are very similar, where they just look at whether there's a proximity issue. And again, this isn't a summary of all the towns, and there are many towns we looked at that didn't have any requirements of any kind. One of the questions that the commission had asked itself in drafting this is, what is the public health and safety reason for the separation between the liquor stores? And I don't think the commission came up with an answer for why there was a need for that. And that's, I believe, why you proposed to do this. I did take a look at, when I wanted to find out when this was installed, and like I said, it was around 1965, when the prohibition or the 1,500-foot separation distance came into play. Initially, I also found that somewhere in around 1973, the town had also had a similar requirement for another use, which is curious, because not many uses have separation distances. And oddly enough, in the '70s, for whatever reason, the town adopted a regulation that required a separation distance of automobile, boat sales and service uses. And the requirement was a 200-foot separation from schools, hospitals, public playgrounds, parks, churches, and public libraries. And a 1,500-foot separation somewhere to this from like uses, from another automobile use. I'm not really sure what the reasoning was for that, but by the end of 2013, that was eliminated, probably for similar reasons why you're thinking about this. And, you know, I can say, we haven't been in flux with problems with automobile service stations, because we don't have those separation distances. So it's just kind of, was strange anecdotal that I found in looking at the, when the alcohol separation came into play. I also note that we did receive responses from the three regional planning agencies that we were required to notice. All three of them found this to be of no regional impact, basically a local determination. We did not get any responses from any of the adjacent municipalities. All the timeframes which we were required to give them have expired, so there's nothing saying, of any objections from that, from those referrals. And similarly, we did not receive any response from Aquarium or from the State Public Health Department. That's all.
Okay. Any commissions have any questions? No? All right, let's open up the public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come down, name an address for the record. Yeah, you're first, Jim.
Jim Weinberg, 59, Rollins Pond Road, in town Monroe. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I am very happy to see this commission willing to take up regulations, whether they're existing or new regulations. I think this one at least deserves to be examined on the light of day. I commend you for that, with your willingness to undertake the process. I know it's not easy. I would like to address two issues tonight, the first being the 1,500-foot separation regulation between liquor store outlets. As you know, Monroe has, by state statute, a limitation of seven such outlets, and our business districts essentially are Roots 111, 25, and a small area on 34. It's my opinion that any regulation should be tested by two rather simple tests. The first is the impact on community interest. Does the regulation do anything to positively impact the community of Monroe as a whole as Britain today? Does it negatively impact the community if the regulation is completely done away with? In my opinion, this regulation does not promote a better community, nor support a specific community interest. Therefore, in my opinion, there is no community interest that is better protected if two liquor stores are 1,500 feet apart, 2,000, or 1,000 feet apart. The second test is the corporate citizen's rights, the landowner, the business, town business folk. We have a limited business district in this town. Is there any reason why we wish to be in the business of excluding commercial property owners from being able to lease out space to any legitimate business tenant they can successfully negotiate a lease with? Liquor stores are legitimate businesses, and like all businesses, they need to be competitive to survive. If we attempt to regulate who these landlords can lease to, we are, in effect, selecting winners and losers. And in my opinion, the town is not well-served if we purposely set out to do so. In most cases, this regulation, being the exception in our town, although I understand there used to be another one, the regulations do not permit the town to arbitrarily decide how to disperse legitimate businesses. Many of you have had discussions with citizens of the town who questioned, why do we need another nail salon? How is that a small town like ours needs four drugstores? If liquor stores shouldn't be closer than 1,500 feet, perhaps we need more regulations, like separating vape shops, or maybe pizzerias, or gasoline stations. The second matter I would like to address is the minimum seating requirements for restaurants to obtain a liquor license. In my opinion, when applying the community interest test, there is no community interest that would support having a minimum seating requirement in order to have a liquor license. I believe the nature of a restaurant is such, especially in our town, that the seating is often governed more by the space availability and the parking allowances than any other factor. Certainly, it is intuitive that restaurants would strive for as much seating as they can have within the regulations they must deal with. So it is not a matter of someone claiming to be a restaurant just to sell liquor. We already have state statutes covering cafe licenses and the like where food service is stipulated, as well as governing the ability of carryout restaurants with just a couple of tables from selling alcohol for carryout. Again, intuitively, it may be obvious that a restaurant can be more competitive if they are able to offer alcoholic drinks with their food. In fact, I believe we have recently seen what happens to small restaurants who fall below the 50-seat rule, cannot serve alcohol, and cannot compete, regardless of how good their food might be. The real discussion here is, what is the interest being served by limiting the ability to obtain a liquor license by an eating establishment that cannot provide a dozen tables or so, each seating four people or more? So applying the test I laid out in the previous discussion, I would say the community interest is not harmed by doing away with this regulation, and in fact, I would suggest, community interest is served in a positive fashion by doing away with the regulation. Giving access to a larger variety of eating establishments, and certainly the businesses of Monroe, our corporate citizens, are better served as well. I lean toward less regulation, not more, and I hope that you will move forward and discard what appears to me to be arbitrary regulations serving no overwhelming community interest, and indeed harmful to the bigger message that the town, including this commission, has publicly endorsed with being open to business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Kevin Gunper. I'm an attorney with the law firm Holly Ann Gunper &amp; Dowling in Fairfield, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of repealing the 1,500-foot rule. I'm here on behalf of 111 Century Plaza Inc., 111 Century Plaza, the Big Y Shopping Center. Here are a few comments. Some of it will be a little bit repetitive of what Mr. Agresta said, but bear with me, it won't be too long. First, zoning commission, like yourselves, when you're, you act in a legislative capacity when you're about to amend your zoning regulations. You can make just about any amendment you want, provided, number one, it's within the governing statute, the Enabling Act 8-2, and number two, that, and here's the quote, "You're free to amend your regulations whenever time, experience, and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for a change." And I think you can see from your own experience in the town that with respect to the 1,500-foot rule, time and experience has shown that it should be eliminated. To put this whole thing in context, quite a number of towns actually have had this 1,500-foot rule in the past. It was common enough that in 1949, which is less than 16 years after the repeal of prohibition, the Supreme Court of Errors, which is what the Supreme Court used to be called, had already had at least a dozen cases involving the 1,500-foot rule. And so much so, that in one of the cases, it refers to the familiar 1,500-foot restriction. These restrictions in the towns, 1,500 feet was the most typical restriction, but the otherwise, the restrictions were quite varied. Some varied between two types, the regulation, the separation had to be between outlets of the same type, on premises, on premises, off premises, off premises. I assume you know what I mean. An off premise is a drugstore permit or a package store permit. On premises would be a tavern, or a cafe, or a restaurant. And there were some that would say, a restaurant had to be 1,500 feet from a restaurant, a cafe 1,500 feet from a cafe. Others said that any outlet had to be 1,500 feet from any other outlet. And then, there is one other regulation, which is that some said, well, then, your regulation was rather peculiar, because most of the towns didn't have a regulation that was only affecting package stores. Because the concern seemed to have been that you'll have a concentration in your business zone, in one part of the business zone, of a lot of restaurants and a lot of package stores. I'm sorry, a lot of restaurants and a lot of bars, which is a fancy word for a bar, is a cafe, as Mr. Agresta said. And that that would cause all kinds of unsightly activity in some part of the town. I don't think that the experience of the towns that have had that has borne that out, that actually is a problem. The real, the real recent people went for this 1,500-foot rule is that the state of Connecticut would not allow a town to limit the number of package stores or other alcohol outlets in the town. It could be a dry town, you could be a wet town. You could limit the hours, but if you were a wet town, you could not limit the number of outlets you had in the town. The Supreme Court of Connecticut said that that was up to the Liquor Control Commission and not to the town itself. But, they said, you could, under your zoning regulations, enact these restrictions that would, in effect, have the same impact. If, as long as it was a zoning regulation, you could say, you could get away with it and it would, in effect, have a practical effect of limiting the number of outlets you could have in the town. That was, so that made a certain amount of sense, because the towns, some towns did not want, were very much concerned that they would be overrun with bars. It was a concern, maybe, maybe not a valid concern, but definitely was a concern that they had. But that, that ended in 1984, at which point the General Assembly passed a laws, Section 30-14A, which limits the number of towns, the number of packet, at least with package stores, the number of package stores you can have in a town. You go back, you look at the most recent decennial census, which is what the US government does every 10 years, and you divide that by 2,500, and whatever you come up with, that's the number of stores you can have. As Mr. Agresta said, and you have a little less than 20,000 people in the town of Monroe as of 2010, so that gives you seven stores. Most likely, when the 2020 is finished, you're going to be over 20,000, so it'll probably be one more halal permit. But, that being the rule, there's no longer any reason or any need to have a limit, an indirect limit on the number of stores, because now you have a direct limit on the number of package stores. The other reason that was always been given is, again, that it avoids a concentration of liquor outlets in one part of the town. Doesn't make that much sense when you're talking about package stores. You can make the argument with respect to bars, that you don't want to have one part of the town have five bars in a row, or five restaurants in a row, although, I'll speak to that in a moment. It's probably the wrong approach, the exact opposite of the right approach. But with liquor stores, what's, what's the issue? I mean, with restaurants, you have, you know, you have noise, maybe, you have drinking and people being loud, people driving after hours, people drive, you know, slamming their car doors, getting out of the restaurants, all that stuff, all in one part of town. It could be kind of a nuisance, you could have drunk drivers. But you don't have that with a package store. In a package store, people come in, they buy their liquor, and they drive home. They're not drinking it on the premises. It's not particularly traffic-intensive use. And so that also is probably a reason that we've had them in the past, or a reason for the 1,500-foot rule, but I think time and experience has shown that that probably is not really a valid reason to keep it in effect. The third reason it's, these rules have survived, is that, in fact, they have, the package store lobbies, lobby, has lobbied hard to keep these in certain towns, because it cuts down the competition. It keeps one store from having to worry about a store being next to it. And you wonder, why should you be in the business of doing that? You look at, you look at the package store, it's a very, very heavy regulated business. The prices that they pay, the wholesale prices, have to be posted with the state of Connecticut. The suggested retail prices have to be posted with the state of Connecticut. As a result, there's not a heck of a lot of competition on price, and as an aside, the prices are quite high. As if you've ever driven to a state liquor store in New Hampshire, you'll, you understand what, quite a difference between what they charge and what we charge. But in any event, the competition among liquor stores is, should be on convenience, service, selection. Why in the world would you want to have a situation where you are discouraging that competition? That benefits, the competition benefits the town, the town residents of Monroe, whereas the non-competition only benefits liquor store owners. You've got seven of them and 20,000 other people, and who do you want to benefit? I'll point out that, as I said, I'm here on behalf of Century Plaza, because Century Plaza would like to have a liquor store. And right as the matters now stand, they're too close to another store, and they can't have one. So, what's the impact of that? You have a shopper come in, doing the holiday shopping, that he or she can buy almost every single thing they need for a holiday meal in the big white plaza. One trip in, park the car, get out, buy whatever you need. But, if they want to have a glass, if they want to have a bottle of wine with dinner, if they want to have cocktails before dinner, what do they have to do? They have to get out, and then they have to drive somewhere else. There's driving in the car, there's the gas in the car, there's the congestion that you cause on the highway. And again, for what purpose? Who does that help? Your citizens are better off with being able to just go to the places, the Big Y, or any of the other shopping centers in town, if that's what they want to do, if that's where they're going to migrate. And like Mr. Weinberg said, what do you want to restrict where the landlord, who the landlord can rent to? If that's a good mix for the plaza, why don't you allow that? Why should you have this artificial requirement of distances between them? You already have the artificial requirement that there's a limit on how many there can be, an overwhelming number of these people, every shopping center in town having one. But on the other hand, if the, if the business makes sense, and the, there's an opening in this shopping center, it seems to benefit your citizens, and doesn't seem to hurt anyone except possibly a liquor store owner that's not able to compete on the basis of convenience, service, and selection. And I think we've pointed out, I think there are two stores now that are sort of in flux. I don't know that, why wouldn't you want one of those to be able to move down to Century Plaza? Why not? It would seem to help everybody out. And I think it's one of these situations where, I hate to use this expression, but what's good for Century Plaza is also good for the town of Monroe. Then I'll speak just very briefly about the restaurants. This is not what I was paid to do, but I'll give you the benefit of my own experience. I was on Fairfield's zoning commission for many years, and for many, many years, Fairfield had a regulation, 1,500-foot regulation about restaurants. In 1988, when I was on the committee to revise the regulations, we did about three things, and the number one thing we did was eliminate the restriction between restaurants. So it was open, any restaurant, if you could find a place you had parking, you could open up, and you could have a liquor license. The change has been quite dramatic. It used to be a very dull town, now it's quite lively. I recently went to a reunion from high school, I'll plead the fifth as to which one it was, and my classmates, about 10 of them said, "I can't believe it, I haven't been to the town in 30 years. When I used to come here, there's nothing to do on a Saturday night, and now there's all kinds of life and, and business downtown." And when you have this changing retail environment, more and more, what you're going to want in your downtown areas is restaurants, entertainment, things like that, because people are just not going to the store that much. They're using eBay and things like that. But they can't, they can't order their dinner off of Amazon, and they can't order their dinner off of any other service, and that's probably what you want to have done. It actually does work, it does invigorate the town, to let the restaurants compete and come in. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Sean O'Rourke, Tan Falls Book Circle. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. In keeping with the chairman's instructions on public comment earlier tonight, I want to voice my support to suspend the 1,500-foot regulation for liquor stores and the suspension of the 50-seat minimum to apply for license to serve alcohol for restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. Sippen?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Name is Dave Sippen, office located at 234 Main Street, and I'm a member of 111 Century Plaza, as well as own other retail properties such as Stepney Crossing. And, I'm in favor of both eliminating the 1,500-foot separation for package stores as well as the 50-seat minimum for restaurants. For the 1,500 package store, I will repeat the reasons they were stated by the prior speakers. And, just a, you know, a few comments on the restaurant. You know, a restaurant is a very tough business to operate, you know, we leased to a number of restaurants in town, and some have been impacted by this restriction, you know, and we've been limited on leasing some space, and this certainly would make them more competitive and certainly, I think, I think fill out, fill out some spaces and attract some different types of restaurants. So, I urge you to consider both of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I know, I did have my remarks typed up. If you'd like them to redo, otherwise I'll just stay with what I have.
You can submit them to the, to the commission.
Ray Giovanni, 22, Carmen Lane, Monroe, Connecticut. I am the president of the Monroe Chamber, and we are very pro-business, and as we've polled our board of, for the organization, they too agree with this particular amendment. If this could be modified, they feel it's a, a great thing for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hosler?
Lee Hosler, 272 Stanley Road. I'm a citizen of this town, and have been for many, many years, but I don't see any regulations on the number of pizza parlors or how closely they may be located. Banks, for instance. In one, one location, within about 1,500 feet, on Route 111, there's four banks. And, there's no regulations on that. And I said, I stopped in, I talked to a couple, "Who are those banks?" I said, "How do you guys deal with this? They're across the street from each other." He said, "Competition is good, it's good for us." And so, I think that's exactly what would happen here. Although the state regulates, we can only have seven, I believe, liquor stores in town. So, seven spread over the town, I, I don't know that that's a big issue. I think the, the competition will control how many and where those, those businesses will be doing business, I should say, and opening new stores. So, I think the, the 1,500-foot is, is, is old, is tired, and needs to be retired. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Last chance? Okay. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this amendment?
Larry Cass, owner of Glen Rose Beer Shop, 47 Monroe Turnpike. Like to just point a clarification on a few things, please, Chair. With regards to New Hampshire, I didn't hear any specific, "They sell it for this and we sell it for that." Go to Hartford, listen to what the testimony in Hartford is, they'll tell you what goes on between us and New Hampshire. He has no idea the price of kettle one in this town, or the price of kettle one in New Hampshire. So I beg to differ with the attorney for 111 Century Plaza. Just making hasty generalizations like that skews you guys and is not fair to anyone else. Both grocery stores do not have a liquor store on their premises, and all permits are currently owned in the town of Monroe. There's a provisional permit at 575, 574, excuse me, there is one that's voluntarily suspended, and the other five are owned. They've all been owned for a long time. The gentleman, a couple gentlemen put in a remonstrance with the state, and that's why the permit at Village Square was pulled because of financial instability. They owed over $100,000. You can check connecticutjudicial.com and see Delavecchio, or Newsy Concept, or whatever you, whatever they're called, and you'll see all of the judge, summary judgments against them. But every single permit in this town for decades has been owned. With that being said, I'll go to my testimony. Obviously, I vehemently oppose the abolishment of Regulation 6.7 Subsection B. By 25 years in the business as a liquor salesman, covering 140 accounts in 13 or 14 cities and towns, I saw a lot of different stores, I saw a lot of different distances, I saw a lot, saw them. Didn't read about them, didn't study them, didn't make charts about them, didn't do anything that, I saw it with my own eyes, okay? Three years, 40,000 miles every year on my car. If you want my tax returns, I'll gladly, gladly hand them over to you. My 25 years with seat, as a liquor salesman, three with Connecticut distributors, 12 years in the restaurant industry, you can ask my wife how many restaurants I've worked for, but it was quite a few. GM of Glen Rose Beer Shop back in '07, and we bought it in 2010. I previously worked there in high school, over 30 years ago. I've seen this town grow, expand, and all along, we've had a great camaraderie amongst the liquor stores. If I don't have something, I will call Myron across town, or anyone else. John Kea, he just sold his store because he's retiring. We've had very little turnover. The store that I did get in Shelton, closed. You know why it closed? Because they were bad managers, they had an okay location, and there was another store within 1,500 feet that put them out. So, I've also had a robbery in my Shelton store because of the proximity of these stores versus Monroe, where I did not have a robbery, but the People's Bank, somebody across the way, in the plaza with the old arcade, the dance studio somewhere in there, I cannot tell you who that is. FM One Stop, they walked in there, saw all their cameras, and then went in and robbed Subway. They did not rob me. The reason they didn't rob me is because I have 32 cameras and I don't have another store next to me. I do have a store next to me, very close, in Shelton. So if they see the cameras in one store, oh, they might go to another store, like they did with FM One Stop in Subway. Putting stores next to each other is ludicrous. I feel my expertise in the alcohol industry will enlighten the committee and take any obfuscation away that you may have. The premise that will, Agresta emailed, and the email is in my testimony, stated that this regulation, dot, 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 is no longer relevant, dot, 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 end quote, which translates to connecting to something. Actual definition from Webster. Well, this regulation does connect the absolute value of each package store in Monroe with only seven stores, and there's legislation in Hartford to cut that in half. In Jersey, it's one per 10,000. So, we're, you know, our population is not growing. I get a report every month on how many people move into the town, the houses that are sold, and the occupants of that. Take a look at any of our plans for the last five or 10 or 15 years, for children, they're all on the decline. If you want to debate that, let's have it. So with seven stores dictated by the Connecticut general statute, one per 2,500, the intrinsic value of our stores is relevant to our location. A skinny realtor who wants to do business in this town, location, location, location. Sales and location do factor heavily in the price of a package store. Almost nine years later, we are still paying off the $1.2 million that my wife and I spent, took the loan on her 401K to pay off and completely owned the store. You know, I don't have huge pockets like some people that are crying about having the inability to have a liquor store there. This rule's been in place for decades. How come it didn't cry five years ago? 10 years ago? And by the way, 10 years ago, I don't believe anybody besides Chairman Porter was on this board. Am I correct with that?
I think that's a correct statement.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's irrelevant.
I believe it's relevant in the fact that, over time, things change. You've changed regulations so that...
But everyone here has been a longtime resident of the town of Monroe.
Correct. But I heard that someone didn't know where Bill's was. I worked there 30-something years ago when it was called Legoris. So, I think there is relevancy to what I'm stating. That the fact that they're not on the Planning and Zoning Commission, regardless if they live in this town or another town, they don't know how this town has evolved, per Planning and Zone. Does that make sense? We didn't pay a penny in Shelton because they went out of business. Do we want an existing business to go out of business because of this regulation abolishment of the 1,500-foot rule? So we see it all the time in Shelton, under new management, under new management. The 111 has been under three owners in less than two years. I don't think you want that kind of turnover here in this town. So I want to quote our First Selectman regarding regulations. It's also in my testimony. This quote came from the town of Monroe, May 3, at 7:14 post on Facebook. First, First Selectman Kellogg, quote, "I want to be very clear, I do not," and "not" is in caps, "support any regulation changes that would have negative impacts on our existing businesses, comma, our ability to attract new business development, all the permits are taken, or create unreasonable restrictions upon property owners, thus landlords." So, if I go out of business, my landlord has hardship. And speaking with the commission chairman, he has assured me that this is not the commissioner's intent either, and this is the quote, so don't, you know, it's out of this part in your package. "I must include revenue loss of landlords who potentially could lose a tenant if they moved next to another store. Also, if a store passes planning and zoning near a church, school, or daycare, which may happen tonight, then the possibility of a second store less than 1,500 feet would now have a valid point to move near them, opening up a circumstance that right now is not an issue." So if you allow the daycare and you allow the liquor store across the street, regardless of the 1,500-foot, if you get rid of the 1,500-foot rule, then someone could move into Steve's, and then, oh, they could move into 111 Century Plaza, you know, the door's open, for absolute chaos. And we haven't had chaos in this town. We've had very good sales, we've had very good fundraising, we've had great people and owners and employees. I mean, I've had generations of employees that have, you know, over time. One of the girls that worked for me, I used to swim with her dad at Wolf Park when I was five years old. You know, this is an old-school town. I'll finish with, we've operated this way since, since, apparently Will said 1960-something, without a problem. So, what is the problem? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this amendment?
Anthony Panino, 236 Roosevelt Drive. I recently acquired Lakeside Wine and Liquor. New to the area. I just want to thank Larry, made great points. I also want to add, you know, I've got over $250,000 into my store that I just put into Monroe, and I think it's extremely unfair that the rug is now going to be pulled out from underneath me. I didn't have 30 years to work towards what Larry has yet, but it'll, out of time and effort, I'll need to recoup that money, given if a store's put next door to me in the strip plaza, right up there, down the road from me in the Big Y Plaza. So I just want to leave everyone with that, and hope you guys can understand.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Members of the commission, my name is George Ganem. I'm a practicing lawyer in the city of Bridgeport for 65 years. I'm not a liquor store owner presently, but my wife and I established what was known as Stepney Wine and Liquor at the intersection of 59th and 25th, 35 years ago. And through the business that we generated there, I was able to educate, five of my sons have become lawyers, one currently in the mayor of Bridgeport, and a daughter went through law school, now deceased. It's been a good system of earning money in this town. Now, I've heard an old saying, and I think we're all familiar with it, "If it's not broken, you don't fix it." It's been working well in this town, the 1,500 rule between package stores. And I don't see any big public outcry for a change in that rule, except some people that have some vested interest in, and want to relocate package stores within a distance of the 1,500-foot rule. And I urge this commission to allow the 1,500-foot distance to stay in place, it's worked well here, it's worked well in many places throughout the state of Connecticut. And I object to any amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ganem. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application?
Mr. Chair, commission members, Skip Gallo, 67 Blake Road. Don't really have a dog in the fight, other than I've lived in the town for 35 years, and I'm certainly a patron of all the liquor stores, some days more than others. And I just wanted to contest one part of the logic here about the balance between the state regulations that hold us to seven stores and maybe growing to eight someday, and how that somehow controls it, and so we don't have to worry about them proliferating to an unreasonable, unreasonable level. On the contrary, I think the fact that we are restricted to seven stores and possibly eight someday, it's all the more important, commercially speaking, that they be spread out through the two business districts, the length of 25, the length of 111, and not cluster three or four, potentially now with some of the applications before us, in a 1,500 or 2,000-foot circle. We could have as many as three or four in that regard. I also don't think anybody would operate or take the flyer that the young man took way down on Route 34 at the very, very edge of the town, if it wasn't for the limitation of those seven. That's not exactly, I mean, it's a truck route, I guess, but it's not exactly the highest traffic location at the edge of town, it's kind of no man's land over there. Small little operation, wish you the best, by the way, with that. But, you know, I'm imagining that somebody across the street, like on the Henny Penny property or something like that, if a permit became available, he'd be out of business overnight, if one of the seven permits decided to move there suddenly. So I do think that the state regulation of seven actually works complementary with the 1,500-foot for a town like us, and the owners involved, and the residents involved, by spreading them out a little bit, allow, rather than having, let's say, four of the seven, or even three of the seven, in a couple of city blocks. So that was my only reference there, it was just that, I think that the state rules and the local rules should work together, and I don't think one necessarily controls the other.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Anyone who has any general questions or comments? Okay. Back to you, Will.
Don't really have much else to add, just summarize again that this is the only use in the regulations where there is a separation requirement. Previous uses were eliminated a while ago. The consistency of this amendment with the P O C D is it is providing greater zoning uniformity, which is actually a requirement under state statutes. It is also speaking to the market orientation recommendations in the P O C D. A lot of the issues that were raised are valid reasons for different purposes and are true for almost any business. You know, any business puts a lot of investment into their business, and they run the risk, obviously, of being successful. I mean, that is the American way. The purpose of the zoning regulation is to protect property values and to deal with public health and safety issues. So, we get back to the question of, we have a separation distance between like liquor stores, but we do not have a separation from churches, schools, and other places. That is a consideration. That's also a consideration the state takes into place when they are reviewing an application for a liquor license. Again, this is a Commission amendment proposed by the Commission. The referrals that were made from the three regional plans is was that this is of no regional impact and of local concern, and there was no response from any of the surrounding towns or from Aquarian or the State Public Health Department.
Okay. What does the Commission want to do?
Close the end.
Close it. Close it. All right. Hearing is closed. It is 9:26 PM. Before we move forward, I just want everyone in the audience to know that because we are down three members tonight, we are not going to be deliberating on this issue tonight. We're going to postpone the deliberation on this to our next meeting, which will be May 2nd. Same is going to go for deliberation on the 575 Monroe Turnpike application. That will be held on May 2nd, provided we have Commissioners in attendance. Okay. Site plan review and permit amendment modifications, we have none. Deliberations and determinations. Item number ten, time extensions. Thirteen dash one, SEP, file number 1581A, 579 Main Street. Request for a ninety-day extension of time to file final plans. And we'll also hit the next item, thirteen dash two dash ZCA, file number, excuse me. Could you please take your conversations out into the lobby? Could you please talk outside? Thank you. Second item, thirteen dash two dash ZCA, file number 993D, 579 Main Street. Request for a ninety-day extension of time to file final plans. It's at you, Mr. Russo.
Yes. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Chris Russo, Russo &amp; Rizil LLC, offices at One Post Road in Fairfield, on behalf of the applicant McDonald's Corporation. Last time I was here, that I appeared before you, you may remember that this particular operator for this site left, retired, David Hawthorne. He had actually operated the McDonald's on Monroe Turnpike, and so he left operating both that site and then prospectively this site. I have spoken with McDonald's and based on the feedback that I've received from you on previous times and from many other people, that we need to move this project forward. And to that end, McDonald's itself has taken over moving this permit along. That's usually not the case. It's usually someone like David Hawthorne or Trebs. McDonald's has now taken it over. They are in the process of preparing the food service application. And just to let you know, one of the challenges is that McDonald's is a constantly evolving corporation. They have a whole university dedicated to reducing wait times by seconds, fraction of a seconds, and they analyze number of steps, and their buildings are really designed around these efficiencies. And, you know, a big part of the challenge here is, as you know, this permit was appealed. That appeal took some time. So, by the time we were even able to move forward on this project, so much had changed for McDonald's and how they operated. And then, I think that coupled with the loss of the operator and just trying to understand how they put their modern operation to their standards in a new building, but that's off of an old design, has been challenging to them. And that's why, at this point, with the loss of the operators, they're taking it over to try to push this project over the finish line. It's not to say it can't be built. It doesn't, you know, McDonald's just doesn't knock its stores down every five years and put up the new, more efficient model. It's just provided, for this particular situation, it's proving to be a challenge. But, again, they've taken it over because they felt the need, that they were needed to be able to push it over the finish line. So, they are putting together the food service application, which will help move this whole project forward. Hopefully.
Okay. So, this is like your twelfth extension request?
It is.
If the Commission is so inclined to grant this, I think if we're coming back for a thirteenth, I want to see somebody from McDonald's Corporate here to assure us that something is happening here, and we're not just going to, for the next five years, be granting ninety-day extensions.
Sure. And I will definitely talk to them about that, so I will not be the only person here next time. And I'll have somebody here that can explain where it's at.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension for 579 Main Street.
For both applications?
Yes.
For ninety days?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, no.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Leacy, yes.
Okay, Mr. Russo, you have a ninety-day extension.
Thank you.
Next up, we have SEP dash one dash oh-seven-S, file 1453A, 74 Enterprise Drive. Request one-year extension to complete site improvements. Welcome back, Mr. Infante.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Michael Infante, and here tonight representing MMI of Monroe in regards to the one-year extension at 74 Enterprise Drive. As many of you recollect, I was here two weeks ago or two and a half weeks ago, and at that time, the Board requested me to come back with a timeline as to the completion of certain things that they had requested me to do. I have since turned in that in writing to the Planning and Zoning, and I'm sure you have copies of it. And I see no problem why I cannot keep with that. We have started cleaning up. We have moved things already, and by the end of next week, we'll be totally completed according to the letter that I turned in.
Okay. What I hope to see here was some kind of a timeline on your second building. Do you have a time schedule? Like, when do you expect to apply for that? When do you expect to break ground for that?
Yes, I do. I have a commitment for a mortgage from a bank. If you want, I can give you a copy of that.
I believe you can.
And this is all predicated on me getting, they want me to have the one-year extension because it's, you all know, the three months that I have left on the extension that I have, is nowhere near enough time to complete my original approval.
Right.
And this is why I requested that. Within this one-year extension, coupled with the three months I have remaining on the extension at that time, I will be able to complete it. At which time, I think, the Board would be very happy, and most of all, I would be very happy.
Have you started your construction documents for the new building? Do you have an engineer or an architect working on your plans?
The plans were approved. When we originally went in for zoning approval, the building was approved as a 26,600-square-foot building to be done, phase one, phase two. The plans are identical.
What's the status of that? They did make an application submission last week, and one of the changes is that there's a use that's being proposed that wasn't permitted until recently. So, they do need a special exception permit for an auto repair shop. There also are some modifications to the plan that are different than the approved plan, similar to like you've been seeing on Seventeen Enterprise.
But that's for the existing building?
Yeah. Well, it's related to the existing building and the second building, which has, as you find, is that it was part of the original approval. So, the application will cover that use. It will also cover the modifications to the site that have either occurred already through the disturbance and/or with the end result of that second building being built.
So, we have the plans for the second building?
We do have the plans for second building. I reviewed them the day they came in and did shoot back an email to the applicant's engineer, and I believe I copied you on, which identified several incompleteness issues with those application materials, and I haven't heard back, so I don't know what the status of that is.
So, in worst case, it will be a site plan modification?
Well, there'll be a special exception permit.
For the use?
For the use. And with that, we'll modify the site plan.
All right. So, you've got your plans, so that's a big step.
Yes.
So, you intend to break ground this year?
Definitely.
Okay. Okay. And you're going to, you've told us here what you're going to do to clean up the site, and as we discussed last time, we have to designate an outside storage area on your site that...
Correct.
By right, you can store things in, but it has to be a designated area.
Yes. And I've had a conversation with the zoning enforcement officer today that he could come out to verify that this, the end of this, next week, that the work that I said would be done in that letter is in fact done.
Okay. The other issue that needs to be addressed, which is one of the items in my email of last week, was there are uses on site that never really received unofficial approval. And there are some uses, I believe, that are outside, which aren't related to tendency inside. So, I'm hoping that the application that will come forward soon to you, we can deal with those issues as well.
It definitely will be.
And resolve those, because that is part and parcel of the parking and...
Correct. Definitely will be. That will be covered under the new application for this special exception.
All right. Well, it looks like we're at least on the right path. Anybody have any questions? No? Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-year extension to complete site improvements for SEP, file 1453A, 74 Enterprise Drive.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Leacy, yes.
All right, Mr. Infante.
Thank you.
You have your extension. Looking forward to seeing that building get started.
You will. Thank you so much.
Item number eleven, bond releases, we have none. Item twelve, pending meeting minutes, April 4th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 4th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, any corrections, comments? No? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Leacy, yes.
Okay. Pending application, deliberations, determinations. These are three applications that we started deliberating on in our last meeting and instructed Will to proceed with draft approval. Ryan, you are not going to be, Ryan should not participate in these, right?
Correct.
Ryan, you're unseated for this section. The three of us, we can go with three. Okay. ZCA, 2018 dash oh-two, file number 1013D, 575 Monroe Turnpike. This is for the zone boundary change, 1.011 acre parcel from an RF1 to a B1. Surrounding, the property surrounding the subject properties is also zone RF1, but consists substantially of regulated wetlands and public watershed lands. Directly across the street are two lots that are currently zoned B1. The property is not within 500 feet of a town boundary or within a 100-year flood plain. Subject property includes an existing dwelling structure constructed in 1958, houses a professional office, business office, within a portion of a house that was approved by a ZVA variance in 1973. The applicant applied for a wetlands permit and was granted by the Wetlands Commission in March. They've notified Commission of Public Health and Aquarian as required. We held a public hearing. It was opened and adjourned on February 7th, 2019, and reconvened and adjourned on March 7th, 2019. And reconvened with an extension from the applicant and closed on April 4th, 2019. So, we're looking at a zone change from RF1 to B1 for the property of 575 Monroe Turnpike. Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the zone change application. CCA, 2018 dash oh-two, file 1013D, 575 Monroe Turnpike.
As drafted.
As drafted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Leacy, yes.
Next up, we have SEP, 2019 dash oh-two, file number 1610A, 45 Shelton Road. It's the application for a special exception permit, site development plan received from Aquarian. They're proposing to install a blower unit on the northeast side of an existing water storage tank. They're not within 500 feet of the town boundary or within a 100-year flood plain. The existing subsurface septic facility will remain unaltered. The existing parking and loading facilities will remain unaltered. No new exterior signage or lighting is proposed. The application received a favorable advisory review from the Monroe Architectural Review Board, and they received a conditional certificate of appropriateness from the Monroe Historic Society. Public hearing was opened and closed on April 4th, 2019. Proposal does not propose any change in site use. Hours of operation and maintenance will remain unchanged. Hours of operation and maintenance will remain unchanged. The proposed action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and that it proposes permitted development activities. The location, nature, height, and design of the proposed new facilities are consistent with existing facilities. The new blower unit and related ductwork running up the sidewall of the storage tank are proposed to be installed toward the rear of the existing storage tank, out of view from the street, and screened to the side and rear by existing evergreen trees. The proposed improvements do not anticipate to hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. No new lighting or signage is proposed. No change to the septic system. Off-street parking and loading remain unaltered. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve special exception permit, SCP 2019-02, file 1610A, 45 Shelton Road, as drafted.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I thought we talked about that they're gonna do some, maybe insulation around the thing.
No, we decided because the location of the blower unit is around the side, backside of the tank, it's screened by a berm, it's screened by trees, and the applicant testified that the blower unit doesn't make any more noise than a residential air-conditioning condenser. And seeing as the closest neighbor has their own central air compressor right outside their building, that this is not going to create any kind of a noise issue.
No, but I thought when I talked to him that he told me that we tried to insulate it.
And then, during our further discussion and deliberations, we decided that we did not need that. Go ahead. Senator Clauzak. Call the roll?
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisi, yes.
Next up, SEP 2019-01, file number 1609A, 17 Enterprise Drive. Application for a special exception permit, site development plan received from J and S Industries, applicant owner to renew elapsed approval for the existing industrial building, including related site improvements and operations. Not within 500 feet of the town boundary, not in a 100-year floodplain. The existing driveway is not proposed to be altered or disturbed. The existing building is certified by Public Water and Onsite Subsurface Septic Disposal System. Those facilities are not proposed to be altered or disturbed. All the public hearing opened and adjourned on March 21st and reconvened and closed on April 4th, 2019. The proposed uses, operations, and facilities require review and approval of the commission. The location of the site access driveway will remain unchanged. Existing parking, loading, site utility, signage, and lighting will also remain substantially unchanged. Proposed site plan, applicable I-2 district requirements. The proposed action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and that it proposes permitted development activities and uses. The location, nature, height, and design of the proposed modified facilities are consistent with existing facilities. New lighting will be minimal, and no commercial signage is proposed. No changes to the septic system or water supply. Off-street parking and loading will remain essentially unaltered from that constructed. The proposed use involves development of private property, changes to which are not anticipated to generate significant new demands for police, fire, and emergency services.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception permit, SCP 2019-01, file 1609A, 17 Enterprise Drive, as drafted.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion? We have anything?
I think that...
Call the roll?
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisi, yes.
Okay. We're not going to start deliberation on any of tonight's issues. Other business. Item 14, Regulations Review Amendment Work Session.
I'd like to make a motion to call for executive session to review the proposals submitted in response to the RFP concerning the 2020 P O C D update, and discussion regarding vendor respondent and vendor selection. Executive session should include the commissioners, the town planner, and the planning and zoning administrator.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We're going into executive session. So, it's a long, fair, well, beat is in.
I'll do one second. It's gonna close the meeting anyway. So Sarah's gonna leave too, and she's not gonna come back when we get out of executive session, a couple of the rest of the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, we're recording again.
Okay. We're back in session, it's 10:02. No decisions were made during our executive session. Item 15, Correspondence Other Received, we have none. Commission reports, I have nothing to report. Any commissioners have anything to report?
No.
Staff have anything to report?
Not tonight.
Okay. Well, happy Easter to those of you who celebrate Easter. And see you in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
10:02.